When you're ready. Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council. It is about 6:20 Thursday, August 9th, 2018. As we begin every regular meeting, we will begin tonight with a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Azar.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, one God, in the world with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Michelle.
Councilperson Oller.
Here.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Present.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Present.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Oller, present.
Thank you. At this time, we give 30 minutes for those in the public to come up and speak on pretty much any issue on your mind. I do ask that you please try and limit your comments to about three minutes. Any item not on tonight's agenda, you can speak on during this time. Tonight's agendas are up front, over here, if you need a copy. Having said that, we'll go ahead and begin. Time for public comments, so if anyone would like to speak, please feel free to come up. And please give your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Donald Hyde, 1411 Popkin Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. Last meeting, I covered the first one of my four points that I've been thinking about, and it was air. Now, I'm going to go to the second thing. And again, I pick these things because I had a lot of time to think, and I asked myself, what were the things that every single human being must keep in mind? The number one thing to live, you've got to have air. So the council, basically, fresh air. The second thing that every single human being has to have, one way or another, is water. We can't have a society that doesn't think about water. And water now has a kind of a double hitter. For a long time, we, I could have gave a speech when I was a child about clean air. But the fact of the matter is, I've lived long enough to see the air get cleaner. Now, it seems to me like we have a problem with water because it's kind of the opposite. When I was younger, the water was pretty clean. I was Boy Scout camping 50 years ago. I could actually drink water out of creeks. I could drink water out of most creeks, I would collect that. And I could drink water out of the river. Not too often, but it could be done. And you could pull water out of the thing and easily clean it. 50 years later, the water's not so clean. Putting that aside, there's another problem, and this is the one that I think that the council overlooks, at least based on this last year. It overlooked it big time. And in my lifetime, and that's what water comes down as rain or snow. We have to have the water, and we can't control it. Neither can you. All we can do is react when the floods hit us. React when the rain turns to snow, and the snow then turns to ice, and a nice little place to put on our park gets hit when the spring rains bring down and brings down ice and knocks that little bridge apart. In other words, with water, the city council has to do something else. They have to be ready and be capable of planning in such a way as to keep bad things from happening to the city. Just like we all have to watch our homes getting from being flooded, including me. I've had my basement flood many times, had to go out and spend extra money, had to do a lot of work to fix the problem. Rain comes into things. But the big thing about rain is no matter how we do it, we can't do, we can't live without water. Our bodies are mostly water, and all our health will be by this. And if that's said, I let it go because there's, I haven't figured out exactly where I'm taking it on that. The next two will be more interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, if there is nobody else, corrections to the journal, please?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There are none.
Reports from city officials?
There are, there is one.
Council President Devon, members of the city council. I'm Brad Spidell, and I'm the Director of Information Technology for the city, also the sewage billing specialist. And so what I'm here to do is just kind of give you a sewage billing overview, kind of a state of the situation as far as that goes. Couple of things I did want to say, kind of as a, kind of an overview or kind of our viewpoints is, what we try to do in sewage billing really is a couple of things. One is, we want to make sure that we are providing a high level of customer service to all of our customers. Of course, we're accurate in our billing, and that we're also attentive, right, to what the needs of the constituents are or their concerns that they may have as it relates to sewage billing. So I thought I'd kind of start, I don't know, I had done one of these presentations a couple of years ago, so I can just start out really pretty simple with what our overview, you know, what does our customer base look like? So on the first slide, what you're going to see is, we have, really, we have three different account bases, if you will, within sewage billing. Indiana American Water is our largest, far and away, our largest water provider. Sealy Bill, which is a smaller provider out on the east side, has about 1,500, 1,400 customers or so, and then we have about 3,500 well-water customers as well within the city. Overall, I would say we have about, the easy number to remember is right about 29,000, right between, kind of fluctuate between 29,000 and 30,000 customers. One of the other stats that I would throw out there is about 83% of all the people that we bill, our customers, live within the confines of the city. The rest are outside the county, in the county. So, on the next slide, what I'm just trying to show you is kind of, you know, here's a right, a pie chart of the water providers. Obviously, American Water is far and away our largest customer base that we have. And the next slide gives you kind of just a breakdown of revenues. So the revenues that come out, the billings that we do, here are the various breakdowns between residential, commercial, industrial, and then public authority is sort of a new one, but that would be city, county, schools, state government, you know, federal government kind of designations. These designations come, the breakdown comes to us predominantly in the data feed that we get from American Water. So I, in having conversations with a couple of members of the council, and we do get questions, I'm sure you get questions. Why are we billing what we're billing? Why are we at Tulsa? Why are bills being sent to Tulsa? Why is the phone, when it rings, and being answered, why is that in Tulsa? This is just kind of a quick rundown of sort of what happened. So American Water used to, from about 2006, 2007, until this time, used to bill our sewer services on the water bills. Well, they stopped doing that. They gave us notice in January of 2012 that said, one year from now, we're not going to do that any longer. So we had to do sort of a quick evaluation, give us a one-year transition of how can the city bill for sewer services? And so what we ended up doing is coming up with an RFP, Request for Proposal, and submitting it, that gives us, we were looking for really a similar, very similar billing arrangement to what we had with American Water. And some of those elements would be, what kind of goes into a sewage bill or the creation of it, is you have to deal with the data, right? So we get all these meter readings. We get these 30,000 meter readings that come into us from the water companies. We have to then calculate the bills, and then there's a portion where you print and mail, right? So that's the, obviously, the printing, the folding, the stuffing in the envelopes, and the cost of mailing as efficiently as you can. Then you also have to deal with the whole customer service, right? So how do I answer questions? How do I answer questions to our customers in an extended period of time? Because obviously, eight to four is not sufficient to, you know, answer everybody's sewage billing questions. There's a consideration there for bilingual or multilingual consideration as well. And then we also have to deal with the whole payment processing, so that whole backend of how do I take in payments from various streams, whether it's online, whether it's people writing checks, whether it's, we have a fair amount of people also who are, they don't use banks, they're cash. And so we are accommodating, you know, trying to accommodate that with what we call walk-in payments. So you have to deal with all of that. And then there's this whole thing is adjustments. How do we deal with adjustments? And again, a lot of that, it's not just leak adjustments or summer allowance adjustments, which we'll talk about later in this, but it's the, American Water does all kinds of really crazy things in their own billing system. And they just give us a data feed, right? And we're told, we just kind of have to deal with it. So that's a big, you know, so that's a big piece. So what we, you know, back to the process, so we kind of, we submitted an RFP, and we said, here's what we're looking for. We need these sorts of things because we determined in this timeframe, we couldn't buy software or ramp up what we had and staff up what we had to be able to meet this, to meet this requirement. We ended up getting four responses back. We got four responses to the bid. Two of them were immediately thrown out because they couldn't meet our timeframe. So we had to be able to bill in January of 2013. And then the decision really was pretty simple because the second one, the one we discarded, was two and a half times the one we awarded it to, the most reasonable and responsive bid. So that's Tulsa, you know, that's TPI, they're kind of the one-stop shop. And the number at the time was, it's 95 cents. It was 95 cents is what they were charging us to produce, to do all those things that I just said. Produce the bill, mail a bill, do the payments, do the adjustments, do the customer service, all of that sort of stuff.
Brad, I don't mean, what was American Water charging us?
Well, you're right, going right where I was. So if it was a mutual customer, so if it was a customer of American Water and ours, so they're already sending them a water bill, they charged us $1.14. And if it was a non-mutual, so a well or sealy bill, they charged us $1.45. And American Water did all, you know, did all these things. So we're kind of going, wow, I mean, look at this. You know, we had really good collections with American Water, right? We had a really good collections rate because a lot of people are afraid, right? If you don't pay your water bill, whether it's sewer or not, right, they'll fix your water off. So, so that's really kind of how, and I would say, in September of 2012, we signed the agreement, and the first bills went out January of 2013. And it's been a simple and glorious, easy, simple process. But I will say this, we have continued to get better. The vendor that we have used has been, we've had some challenges, some fits and starts, as you would. This is really complex. I didn't have an appreciation of just how complex this business really is. But we have continued to expand, and our collections are getting better. So kind of what we'll see, if you turn to the next page.
Real quick, Brad.
Yep.
You talked about customer service. I mean, within your department, I know if you have an employee that doesn't do what they're supposed to or is disrespectful to a customer, you're able to handle that in-house.
Yep.
How do you handle that if the company out of Oklahoma, how do you deal with somebody that they've not done great?
Yeah, great question. So we do get people who will call us. You know, a lot of times, they'll bubble up to me. So every time somebody has an interaction with a customer on sewage billing, there's a memo entered, a record is put onto their account, so we see who accessed the account. And there's usually a brief memo of a customer called in questioning payments or, you know, what have you, and maybe a little blurb of, are they irritated, wanted a supervisor, you know, whatever, whatever the case may be. If we have an issue, again, or when we have an issue, as long as I know who the account number is, you know, give me a service address, give me an account, give me a, give me some piece of data, we can track it right down. So I have a contact that's sort of my peer, and every call is recorded. We can get transcripts of those calls. They'll usually kind of handle it. If there's an issue there, their customer service hierarchy will reach back out to the customer. Or I will.
They will, or you or somebody in your local staff?
Whatever the case, right, whatever, whatever the case. Usually, if it bubbles up to me, it's mine. I got it. I'm not letting go. So I will call them back. I will run that down to, you know, to ground, if you will, to make sure that they're satisfied. And I will say, you know, satisfaction, right, customer service. A lot of customers, what we strive for from a customer service standpoint, is to be accurate and timely, and we really try to be nice. I mean, we do try to be nice, but you better be accurate in your answer, and you better be really timely in the response, and then we can kind of work on the nice piece. A lot of people don't like the answers they get from us. That makes them mad, which I understand. I mean, I get that. We're talking a lot of money here. We're talking social, you know, socio-economic things that are going on, you know, healthcare problems, you know, I understand that. But it doesn't, as long as we're, again, being accurate and timely, and we're, like I said, we are working on kind of being a little, a little nicer about that. But you'll, you'll see, I think that through, as we kind of go through the presentation a little bit more, sort of, we really have, and I'm jumping ahead, and I'm sorry, so let me, let me not do that. I mean, let me not jump ahead. So here's our bill, I just want you to know. So here's our billing streams, here's where we get, here's where we get in our payments, right? Still, 44% of people are writing a check and mailing it, right? And that's a machine that then scans it and runs it through. We have, it's a pretty good number of 32% of those are online. In that online number, I want to let you know, there's a couple of bigger banks here in town that use a service, so when you do bill paying through ABC Bank or PDQ Bank, they use a service that kind of brings it in efficiently for us or for the handler there. So we do have a pretty good rate. The easy paying is a number that I keep a really pretty close eye because that's the auto pay. Those are the customers who are saying, I'm the due date of the 14th, you know, go ahead and hit my, go ahead and hit my account. Because that usually leads me also to believe, it's not, doesn't have to be that way, but that also means they're probably e-billing customers, which means I don't have to generate a paper bill. I'll send you an email that says, hey, come on here, take a look at your bill if you want, and that's kind of really what we're trying to focus more attention towards, marketing towards, because that drives the cost down for everybody, right? So we like to see, we want to see that number grow. And then the walk-in payments, that 8%, those are, that's the Jiffy Mini-Marts, the Mike Stop &amp; Shops, and City Hall payments. People coming in and making payments on their normal sewer bill, not dealing with collections, on their normal sewer bill, coming to City Hall and doing that. So, you know, that's where, any question, I guess I should say, if there's any questions on these, go ahead and jump, okay. So of course, what sewer, sewage, state of the city sewage billing would be complete without, just here's a quick comparison. The, there is a rate difference. We had a rate change between 2017 total numbers and 2016 total numbers. The other thing that I just, because I'm a data dude, we did see in 2017, we did see overall for the year, a decrease in usage. All right, so that's a revenue thing, right? But again, that's just, that's the trend that we're seeing, you know, right now, so.
Brad?
Yep.
Can you venture a guess as to why we're seeing a decrease in usage?
I think there's a, there's a really strong theory that goes, something like, the higher the price on something, the less of it I'll use, right?
Closer you watch it, closer you watch your news of it?
I do it in my house, you know? If my wife is taking more than a seven-minute shower, man, I am banging on that shower door and I'm saying, you know?
You know these are on YouTube, right?
Yeah. She knows. She'll agree. She goes, yeah, she'll agree with you. But I mean, it's, but I think that has something to do with it. I know I've heard, and I've read, you know, there's weather patterns and there's, you know, you know, if my yard is looking really brown, maybe I'll water, right, you know, like I said. But I know from my standpoint, it's, in my personal, this is Brad, if the price is going up, I'm watching my consumption. Or I'm trying to watch my consumption. Okay, next page. Some of the questions. What are the top questions that are asked of sewage billing? This is compiled, this is kind of a mashup between Tulsa and City Hall reps, which I should say. In City Hall, we have three, three call-takers are, we had one just leave us a week ago, so I guess we're down to two call-takers. But they are ranked in generally what we get asked the most, but I wouldn't put a whole lot of stock in that. But there's a lot of questions about account status, you know, what's my billing amount? It's easier to call you. I want to know, did my payment hit? Right, these aren't those online bill view people, get a lot, you know, we have a lot of that. We do have people that don't understand the billing and the service dates. So I want to put a pin in this one because there's been a discussion, there was an article in the newspaper that talked about, and I think they used in my, we had customers that got double readings. They got billed with double readings. So they didn't get double billed, they just had two readings show up on their bill. The month before, or it might be the month after, they would have no readings, right? So it's, it's American Water, and I'm not trying to make excuses here, I'm just, this is part of the challenge we have with American Water at times. They have 70 different meter reading routes that they have dudes or people running out and reading meters. Two of those routes, for whatever reason, all of a sudden, in first quarter, March of 2018, started reading on the first and the 30th, or the 31st. Well, when I, just so you understand, when I go to process my bills on the 20th of the next month, I look in the bill hopper, I look in the meter reading hopper, and I bill what's in the hopper. So if there's one on the first and the 30th, we put them in, right, and we bill. And then the next month, for example, they won't have a meter reading, you know, they won't have, they won't have a reading in there, so likely what you'll see is a trash hole, if they're a city, you know, if they're a city, if they're a city person. Well, we had this great situation that happened, and I'm being very sarcastic there, where we had a period of time where we were getting two readings, no reading, two readings, no reading, to the same group of customers that are on these two routes.
How many people would you say that was?
Well, I can tell you in June, June, so we have, I should say, so first of all, the good, good news is, we have a solution. It's not happening anymore. The last time it happened was in June, the June billing, and it was 2,647 customers. In July, okay, I wasn't completely transparent there, in July, we had five. We didn't catch five of them. They went through and they got the two readings. Our vendor called those five and said, hey, we will make payment arrangements and turn, you know, we made a mistake, and so they kind of reached out on their own, didn't ask us, just on their own. So it's, here's the thing, is we've had to change our programming, because it took us a while to scramble and figure out how to do this. American Water, not throwing them under the bus here, but they're really hard to deal with. They're really big, and they're going to do it the way they're going to do it, and, you know, City of Terre Haute, you have this agreement, and we're giving you the data. Be glad you get it. That's just kind of their attitude. So they're not helping us at all. So we're kind of, all right, fine. So we're fixing that problem. So you probably got calls, I imagine. Like I said, there was an article in the newspaper, just, I think last week I was on vacation and it hit, you know, I just wanted, I'm telling you, that's the June billing, that was the last time it happened. We billed July, billed July, two and a half weeks ago, there were five. And we don't expect it, you know, going forward.
So the solution was what, to make it so it doesn't happen again?
So what the database, what the database analyst out there did is, we, well, so if we're looking, so that in a, in a short term, if we're going to go pull up the bill for Karam's house, and we see two bills and they're sufficiently far apart, or really, we don't see any account activity, so we don't see you getting, doing a change, like you're doing a closing account, like you're leaving, because that would give us two readings also. But if they're kind of spread out, we're just going to hold one. We're just going to take that one at the end of the month, and we're just going to hold it and bill it next month. And we'll go ahead and just bill you the one.
And we did that in-house or did the Oklahoma?
No, no, that's, they, they have the big servers, they're, that's Oklahoma who's doing that. Yeah. So also, a big question that we get, and I imagine, I'm guessing you guys, you all, sorry, would be getting this too, is, why are my sewer bills higher than my water bill? What the heck? How could that possibly be? Well, my slightly tongue-in-cheek method, you know, of responses, you know, the water company has wells that pull water out of the ground, clean water, they treat it, they make it clean, they send it down a set of pipes that are all over the city, right? And it comes out your tap. All you got to do is turn that thing on, and it comes out the tap. I said, the sewer operation, well, if we only had it that easy. We have to take your dirty water, build a whole separate set of pipes, run it through a plant that has to clean it before we can return it to the river. So of course sewer, I mean, it's going to be harder to treat dirty water than it is to just have clean, yeah, I mean, just kind of, and they kind of go, yeah, I get it. I mean, they, they understand that. But I mean, that's really sort of the, the long and the short of it. It is a little more difficult to clean up dirty water. And that, now, like I said, that seems to get past a lot of the, you know, a lot of the question people have. Of course, we have rates and charges, and this could be is, what is our rate? Or really, it's more like, why is my bill so high? I mean, that's usually, why is my bill so high? Lot of times, it's all, right, so our first answer is, as Todd asked the question, because your water usage is high, is why your sewer bill is high. Lower your water use, and your sewer bill will go down. The other thing that I did want to say is, so we do get some questions, allowances, and payment arrangements. I imagine you probably have, we do get some people who kind of comment quite loudly of, why don't you make payment arrangements? I have this, whatever, $150 bill, and I think what a lot of it is, is people are very worried that we're going to shut off their water, right? I mean, I think the nose is that we're shutting their water off. Well, our answer is, to be very correct, is we don't have payment arrangements if your account's in good standing, right? Pay what you can, pay as much as you can. If you were filling a kiddie pool, or you filled a kiddie pool a couple of times, you know, kick it up, but I'm, you know, you're going to say, you're not in the disconnect process, right? So there's, I'm not threatening you to disconnect, I mean, just pay as much as you can, which is very much different than if you do get that letter that says, hey, I'm going to disconnect your water, which I'll talk about a little bit later in the presentation. So we do get some people that are kind of like, because I think other utilities will let you make arrangements, we just, there's no, like I said. And then leak adjustments, I'll also talk about a little bit later. Are there any questions that you all get asked that I haven't really addressed as far as sewage billing, sewage drilling operations, sewage drilling charges?
Why do you have to wait so long to get a leak adjustment?
Why do you have to wait to, like, a leak adjustment? Okay. Great question. Leak adjustments, there are two adjustments available if you have a leak, a proper leak, let's call it. Water company, if you have a leak, and you convince the water company, so that's the first one, you convince the water company it was a leak, and they grant you an adjustment, and it can take them a while. I mean, they, so you, how do you do this? Sorry. So if a constituent calls you and says, hey, I had a leak, what do I do? My opinion to you is, two things. One, call your water provider, tell them you had a leak. Well, one, fix it. Fix it, hold on to the receipt. Number two, call the water provider, tell them you had a leak, and let them start the process. If it's American Water, American Water has an automated session, an automated process that when they approve an adjustment for however they approve it, however much they approve it, I don't have any control over that, they send it to us in the data stream. And it will automatically, we will apply it to their sewer bill. So it's a one-for-one. If they reduce the sewer bill, or the water usage by one cubic foot, 100 cubic foot, one seep, we will reduce the sewer bill the exact one seep, we will reduce the sewer bill the exact commensurate amount, right? So it's a one-for-one, so that's number one. So say, fix the leak, call your water provider, then number, the next step is, send an email, call the sewage company, just call us, and say, I had a leak. City code is very, very specific, it's pretty straightforward on how you get a leak adjustment in the code, and you just submit to us in writing, tell us you fixed it, give us a copy of the receipt, if you can do that initially, it saves you like one, one extra step. And what we do, and, and let's say it's going to be granted, and that what we do is, we wait to see American Water, we want to see their credit. If their credit comes in, because the reason we wait is because if they provide the credit, it modifies the math in the credit that we provide. If they don't provide a credit, they are likely to get a little bit higher credit from us, right? So we, we look from that workflow, that credit hits, and then usually within days, so you usually catch the same billing, we try, we strive to catch the same billing cycle. You'll see two credits for leaks, right? You'll see American Water, and it's noted that way, and you'll see ours, right? And so it's boom, boom, if they catch it quickly, right? We have multi-month links and, you know, things along that line. I should say, since we're talking about leaks, the council, I think, did every, a, a year ago, August of 2017, you all passed a revised city code that said leak adjustments used to be just one month. You, that code was changed to allow a fraction, a portion of a second month, contiguous month on either side. And I think that's helped. I think that's helped a lot. I was just asking Jesse, our supervisor, and he said, it's probably been three and a half months since we've had anybody complaining about doing an appeal up to the sanitary board. They're seeing multi-month, and you're, the date is too new, but we'll, we'll get to that. Any other questions? Customer service questions?
Yeah.
Yep?
Can the city condemn my house for not paying my sewer bill?
Can they? I think that's a question of code, and if you have a, if you're living in a house without potable water, probably ought not be living there, because that is not code.
Yeah, the house in question is an empty rental.
Empty rental.
Where there's not a, a water bill actively, so there's not a sewer bill, but there may be a delinquent sewer bill, I'm not sure.
I'm, if it's within your district, that's going to be American Water, without a doubt, and I'm probably not getting data on it. If there's no water bill, I'm not producing any sewer bill. I mean, I might be doing the trash, but I'm not doing, you know, to me, I would say, that's a call to 311 with a building inspector, you know, I mean, I don't know that it's the great thing to have people living in condemned houses or houses without water. I, I know that's against code, that much I know.
The house in question is not condemned, it's well-maintained, it's been empty for a couple of months, and a city notice delivered by the city worker showed up on the front door that said, in essence, that if you don't pay the water or the sewer bill, we're going to condemn your house. Got a photo of the.
Can you give us that address, I'll check.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what the address is, off the top of my head, but I can follow up with, with the actual notice and everything.
Is there a personal bill? You shouldn't be doing.
Well, I suspect that there's an unpaid bill, and this is the city's way of trying to incentivize the.
Well, okay, so there is a workflow, right? So there's a workflow that we have that says, and we're jumping ahead in the, in the present, but I want to answer your question, so, oh, we're on the right page. So if you're looking at the, the page with delinquent accounts, okay, so, and I will answer, believe me, I will answer your question time. So when we look at delinquent accounts, when we look at doing collections, right, there's really two groups of people we're looking at. One is, are you the account holder? And what can I do to collect from you, the account holder? And are you, or, and/or, are you a property owner? That could be a landlord with tenants, or just a property, anyhow. And there's really two different paths that we sort of take to collect from that. And I tried to deline, define these here, so, the first thing I want to say from a delinquent account, sorry, is the number of accounts, the good news is, woo, number of accounts that we have in the city sanitary district that are in good standing, 79%. We range between 79% and 81% of our customers have zero balance at the end of 31 days. So that's great, I mean, that's, thank you, you know, thanks for paying your bill. So what we're talking about with the rest of this collection stuff is really that 20%. So what do we do to collect on delinquent sewer bills? One is, we send out letters. So I'm going to send you a letter to the account holder at 60 days. Your bill is past due 60 days, I'm going to send you a reminder, and I'm probably going to rattle the saver a little bit that says, you know, we could file a lien against you, we could shut your water off, please pay the bill, you know, and away you go. We also, at that same, just about that same time, well, let me go through it. If you're an account holder, and you don't take notice of the delinquent letter, and that delinquent letter goes out every single month, every month that's greater than 60 days, you're going to get a letter, you're going to get, so you're going to get a bill on the first of the month, and you're going to get a reminder letter from me on the 14th of the month. And you get a bill at the, you know, so, so you're getting frequent notices. If you are an account holder, and your water gets sufficiently behind, you will fall into what we call the disconnect process. So sorry, I kind of jumped down on this, but the disconnect process is something that impacts the account holder, and what the disconnect process is, is I have to send you a letter, based on state code, I send you a letter, and you got 10 days, 10 days to come to City Hall and correct this past due balance, or I'm going to place an order to American Water to have your water shut off. So in 2017, we sent out 4,500 disconnect letters, okay? We average 100 a week, every week. We processed 32 disconnect orders to American Water, and they complete 20 of them. So they go out and they shut somebody's water off. This gets exactly to what you were commenting, Todd. So if that water is shut off and remains shut off for more than 30 days, you know, we, we see a vast majority of those 20 shut offs, about 17, 16 to 17 on average reconnect, right? So we have a fallout every week of three or four accounts where the people either scoop or stay. And at 30 days, we have a workflow then that says, any of those disconnects that have gone past 30 days, a work order in 311 goes out to a building inspector, and they go out there and they knock on the door, they're trying to see if somebody lives there, and they do hang a door hanger on there. They do encourage them to get your water reconnected, or say, you know, you can't be living in a house without, you know, without water. I will say, so that, that goes on, and there's a special consideration, American Water then puts what's called a septic service lock on it, so that account can't really have the water turned back on until it's released from us. So you got to pay it, because a lot of times what you'll have is people will change the name, hey, I'm Bob, and I'm moving into this house, or I'm, you know, and just, you kind of see account names switch, you know, to kids, dogs, other spouses and things. So that's, that's most likely where that's particular one, if there was a disconnect, so there's probably a pending amount that's out there that has to be satisfied before it'll be released to have the water service turned back on.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So there's sort of our collections process, if you will, for account holders. Well, I'm also imagining that you guys, you all, sorry, are also getting contact from property owners, right? Because property owners, landlords, call a lot, right? If you're, if you're a property owner, landlord, and you have a tenant situation, and you choose to have the water service in your tenant's name, all right, that, that's your call. Some, some landlords say, I want it in my name. I'm going to keep it in, in my name, or my company's name, and that way I know the water bill's paid, and I know the sewer bill's paid, and I'm not going to get a lien, and I'm not, I'm not going to have any issues. But what we do for the property owners is that at 60 days, remember that delinquent thing, the think of the letter that we send out? Well, if we know that it's a landlord-tenant, or we suspect it's a landlord-tenant house, what we do is, we send at 60 days, or within 20 days, anyway, at about 65 days, we send a property owner notice letter. And that is a letter that goes to the property owner, address on file for that parcel that says you got a delinquent bill at that property, you know, we probably talk about, as I kind of say down at the bottom, you know, the end of code 36-9-23-32 says, you know, we can file a lien if it's unoccupied by the owner, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What we try to do before that, though, is, you'll notice that we do have this thing called, so we have the property owner letters that we send them, we also have this thing called sewage billing information request. So if I'm a property owner and I want to know, I have somebody who's moving out of my house, and I want to know, they can fill out a very simple form, we respond to these usually 24, it's usually closer to 48 hours, but definitely inside of three days, with what your current balance is on that account right now. So you send in that request, and you're going to know what that balance is on that account, because obviously somebody wants their security deposit, or you want to withhold some dollars from security deposit, what have you. So I'm just going to say, if I'm a property owner, and I'm paying attention to my properties, first of all, you're going to get a property owner notice at 60 days delinquent, right? On that address, right? So you're going to have a letter, and it's going to show you how much is delinquent and the total amount due. If you have any questions about that, send a form in to us, and we'll, Johnny on the spot, turn it around and say, this is the balance that's owed. And then the third thing, you know, the next step down, which we really don't want to, then we, if we don't get that, then we can file liens, and we are filing liens now for unpaid sewer bills, started at the end of 2017 into 2018, and, you know, that process is working to recoup, you know, recoup some of those dollars.
Brad?
Yep?
About how many liens did you file in 2017?
633.
Thanks.
Brad?
Go ahead.
Is this 48,000 delinquent letters, is that an annual total?
Uh, yes, yeah, delinquent letters, 48,000, that's what we're sending in a year, so that's that little reminder, postage.
And the 31,000 is also an annual?
Annual number, yes.
Are there past due charges, charged?
Um, yes. So one of the things that we have in our collections arsenal is, there is a 10% late fee, but it's a one-time, per stat, state statute, so it's one time. So if you're late with your bill on January 1st, it's your first bill, you're going to get a one-time 10% charge if it's not paid in full by that. It's no, there's no compounding, right? It doesn't compound. Now, if you just continue to not pay, you're just going to get a late fee on what that particular month's billing was.
And then, then how are all these letters generated?
Um, they are generated by Tulsa through that database, so they comb through, we're looking, right, so we're looking at checks if you're greater than 60 days, and we notice a flag of, you know, not to send letters, flag, you know, flag on, letters are okay, if it's a property owner notice, same thing, if we have a property owner designation within the field and the flag for lettering is on, you know, we, we send.
So they just go out automatically?
Correct.
Do they charge us for those letters?
They do. 12.8 cents each, plus postage.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brad, a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, in 2012, you said that American Water decided not to, to bill.
Yep, canceled all third-party billing contracts, yes.
Was that just for?
Nationwide.
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 That was my, okay, that's, that was my first question.
Yep.
Secondly, on, because I own property and tenants, of course, I got a letter that they didn't pay, and I ended up paying.
Thank you.
If, yeah, if they're, because I didn't want them to have, not water.
Great, thank you.
But if, if they didn't pay their water, the water company shuts their water off.
Correct.
But they don't put a lien on the property for the property owner because they didn't pay a water bill.
Water can't, electric can't, gas can't.
Water can?
Water, gas, electric cannot lien, sewer in Indiana can.
So the, the code is only for sewer?
Correct.
Okay, because I don't have the code in front of me.
Correct.
Okay, so in other words, the property owner, okay. That's, and I, and I know what happens, but I get called false times from property owners.
Yep.
Why am I responsible for what my tenants do? And, I mean, it's a great question.
Great, right.
I had a tenant today, didn't pay their light bill, called me downstairs, this is my light charm on, I said, well, pay your light bill, your light will go back on if you do, but they.
Cause and effect.
Yeah, there was no, I mean, the electric companies don't put a lien on that property because they didn't pay their light bill.
Right, right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just wondered why there's that discrepancy. So you can hold the property on a liable.
Sewer.
Because of sewer.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to, I want to be able to answer everybody else.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
One more quick question.
Sure.
Have you given this presentation to the sanitary board?
Um, bits and pieces, nothing quite this comprehensive. I usually update them on collections, collections activity, what we're doing, how, how we're doing, but yeah, not, I mean, I'm.
Okay, I wouldn't want them to be slided by now.
For the, right, half hour, however long this thing is going, I'm sorry. Great. So, you know, and the one other thing before I transition, I do want to say, just because, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't address it, so, third bullet from the bottom, sorry. So third party, you brought up sanitary board. The sanitary board required us, before we could charge off accounts as bad debt, they, they added a requirement that said, we want you to try to go to third-party collections. So the kind of stuff we're putting here, right, so what goes to that is stuff that's beyond lienable, for some reason I either can't lien it, property is transitioned, it's changed hands, it's greater than 36 months, you know, there's a couple, a couple of things. They've required us to go or retain a collections agency to go after and try to, to get that money, and there's a policy they passed that will try that for six months. So you may get people that come to you and say, you know, hey, this, this firm is trying to get me, or they're taking me to small claims court, or, you know, what have you, yeah, it, it could be, just know that's really, kind of like, really, really old, or debt, so, that is, that is kind of one of the arrows in the quiver, if you will.
I have one other question.
Sure.
And, and only because it's a personal thing now.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
And if, if a, a property owner gets a notice that, that their tenant has not paid the sewage bill.
Yep.
But then, the tenant maybe goes four days later and starts making a payment on that, does the property owner then get a notice saying that you're, they have start, made, started making payments on this? Because you have tenants that'll say, I made payment arrangements, and who knows?
Right. So I would put forth probably, let me define your scenario a little bit more, so, and then maybe offer a suggestion. So if, if this was the very first property owner notice that you got, so they just went 60 days, and they pay enough, whatever that payment amount is, and they pay enough to get beyond the threshold of the 60-day oath, you won't see a property owner notice next month. It, you know, it, you know, they'll be out of the, they'll be out of the queue, so to speak. And not this is, not that this happens a lot, or all the time, a little sarcasm there too, sorry, a lot of people will call and say, hey, I made a payment, right? It's not posted, I made a payment. I, I paid it here, and I went to the Jiffy Mart, and I went, you know, and you just bring in the, right? So if I'm a property owner, what I'm going to probably do is, I'm probably going to jump on that website and just do a quick, a really quick sewage billing inquiry, and just see if the balance has changed. I mean, you're going to know, you're going to know the current balance as of right now when that process, so, but you won't get a unique letter that says payments are, anyway.
Okay.
All right, so that's the end of the, like, the bad news. So it's kind of, if anything, I would say, kind of, so here's a little bit, you know, try to end on a, end on a high note, right? So allowances, so these are the allowances, the last two slides deal with leak adjustments. You can see in the graph, kind of the number, sheer number of leak adjustments we've processed, and I will say that 2018 is through June, June. So we're, we're at 2018. So we're, 2018's going to be a banner year, I think, for leak adjustments, as far as the sheer, the sheer number, because that's only, you know, five months. And I also would expect to see probably the trend increase as far as the amount, because now we're giving, since August of 2017, we're giving the option on a multi-month leak, you're given the option to get a portion of that second month back. So, questions that you guys have, I guess, or you all, sorry, on leaks, or how to go about leaks, or how to funnel customers, constituents into the leaks, it's simple email, phone call? You good? Okay, last adjustment. So summer allowances, so we have, we have been receiving some calls about summer allowances, people will ask you questions about, hey, I filled my pool, I watered my flowers, I washed my car every day in the summer, my summer usage spikes. City Code has an allowance for that. We call it the summer allowance, or the sprinkling allowance, but it's all under the allowances, so we understand, or previous city councils who passed it understood that summer usage spikes, and so there's a way in city code for people to get a portion of that excessive usage back. So I do want to say, so some of the things we're trying to do in sewage billing is to make that a little more widely known, right? So we did post on the city's website news articles that talks about a summer allowance, it was posted in May, it was posted again in July, we're probably going to go a little more social media-ish as we get closer to the end of the year, because there's, there's some timelines, you have to, you have to request it in 2018 to be available for 2018. So, I mean, like I said, and so if you have people who are complaining, I filled my pool, the water didn't go into the sewer, or I'm sprinkling my, you know, watering my flowers, and it doesn't go into the sewer, well, you know, understand, city code is very clear, sewer bills are based on meters. So the meter spins, that's what the sewer bill is. But y'all anticipated that problem by saying, okay, here, you can get an allowance, right? And it looks at your three, so what it do, just real fast, take your three lowest months in the year of your account, and your account, and your, each individual, take your three lowest, and we'll look at your three highest, they have to be contiguous, they have to touch each other. We add 30% to the lowest, and anything that's over the difference then between the two, we'll give you back cash money, well, credit on your bill, but it happens in February, the credit shows up in February, so we take a snapshot of the whole year, 2018, we look at it in January 17th, right? So I have to get the December bill, we close, right, due date is the 14th. The key thing is, your account has to be in good standing, you had to be there for a year. So there's not, so we get some people who are kind of going, you know what, I used $400 worth of sewer bill to fill my pool, I'm not paying it. I'm not paying it, and I want a summer allowance. Well, you won't get one. You have, your account has to be in good standing at the end of December, and then in February, when we process that credit, you'll get that money back. So that's, I just say that to make you all aware. All right.
Thanks, Brad.
I should just say, if anybody has other questions, more detailed questions, give me a shout, we can talk sewage billing for a language you can tell. Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks, Brad.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety.
There are none.
Reports from standing committees.
I don't believe there are any.
Reports from non-standing committees.
I don't believe there are any.
Items previously tabled.
There are none.
Abatements, the foundation.
There are none.
Items on second reading.
There are none.
Items on first reading.
Oh, we have one.
Okay.
Appropriation 10, 2018, the 2019 City of Terre Haute budget. If I may, Mr. President, the bond, in front of everyone, you have one binder, it has both the sanitary budget and the City of Terre Haute budget. If you remember, a few years ago, they changed the statutes, and the council has to approve the sanitary budget in its entirety. Sanitary budget is not the wastewater utility budget, it's the bond budget, it's in the back of that. You also have before you a little piece of paper, which I will put on the website, that describes the meeting dates that are upcoming for the budget. It shows that tonight, the budget's introduced. By statute, you cannot take any action on the budget, you can't have discussion, but I wanted to point out, September 6th, 2018, at 5:30 PM, the public hearing, as required by statute, will be held on the budget. That meeting is for public discussion only. The council will take no action nor have any discussion, the public will be able to come and speak on it. September 19th, at 5:30, will be the special meeting for the discussion between the council, the mayor, and the controller on the proposed budgets. The budget is set to be voted on October 11th at the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. There can be additional special meetings between now and when the budget is voted on, but no action can be taken on the budgets until October. Oh, and the budgets must be passed by the end of October.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak on appropriation 10, 2018? Next item, please.
Appropriation 11, 2018, the 2019 City of Terre, sanitary budget. Again, just as a reminder, the statutes were changed, and normally sanitary district, sanitary board would vote on this, and the council would have no action, but now you're required to pass it in its entirety. This is not the wastewater utility budget, this is only for the bonds.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on appropriation 11, 2018? Counselors? Next item, please.
I'm sorry, Resolution 11, 2018, rescinding Resolution 6, 2007, Resolution 3, 2008, Resolution 4, 2008, Resolution 7, 2009, Resolution 8, 2009, Resolution 12, 2010, Resolution 13, 2010, and Resolution 6, 2011, DA, DC, Sony tax abatements.
Justice sir?
I guess it will be me. This is the final step in rescinding all of the active tax abatements that DA, DC, Sony have. If you remember that they did submit letters stating that they were in favor of this, and legal department had prepared the resolution that I believe I handed out last time. If anyone goes to the website, the reason, it is split into two piles, it's this stick.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on the Resolution 11, 2018? Name and address for the record, please.
My name's Donald Wayne Hyde, and I'd like a clarification. Exactly how much, over the time, did they get in tax break?
Mr. President, I would suggest that they contact the auditor's office to get more clarification on that. There was both personal and real abatements, and you may also have to go to Harrison Township as...
I'm not talking about personal, I'm talking about the company itself, what did they get?
We're referring to personal equipment, personal property.
All right. You don't know, then...
We don't have that information, that's through the auditor's office.
That's good enough, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mr. President? Justice nation? I guess I'll be also contacting the auditor's office to see how much we're actually clawing back by rescinding these ordinances. Each of these resolutions has some amount of money attached to it that we were letting Sony keep, so that in exchange for what they said, the investments that they had made into their property. And I'm curious about that, about this big list of resolutions that we're rescinding, about what the actual value is that we're talking about not letting them keep anymore. And if there are no further questions, let's see, I do not need to vote to vote. So if there are no further questions, I move that we approve Resolution Number 11, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we approve Resolution 11, 2018. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. Next item, please.
Resolution 12, 2018, rescinding Lennox still tax abatement, Resolution 22, 2006.
Justice sir?
A little background on this, if you remember the special meeting that we had in July concerning the hearing for this, during that meeting, they sent an email about why they weren't at the meeting. So I contacted the nice lady that had sent that, and their answer was, there's very little left on this abatement, and they understand why the city council is rescinding it, so they have no objections as well.
Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on Resolution 12, 2018? Counselor?
Justice sir?
Councilman Nation?
I note that this one was originally passed, or entered underway in 2006, so if it was a 10-year abatement, it stands to reason that there would be very little left in what must be the last year, or the final year for it. And if there are no further, if there's no further discussion, I move that we approve Resolution Number 12, 2018.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Crossen, that we approve Resolution 12, 2018. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Move to adjourn.
Adjourn.
It has been moved to adjourn by Councilman Azar, seconded by Councilman Elliott. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.